Six thirty, I'm going to call this evening in Joshua City Council. We do have a forum present. As this time, we're going to rise and do the pledge, pledges through United States flag and their Texas flag. After the pledge of standing, Pastor Todd Ferguson of Rangers Church is going to do our dedication.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. The God of the rich and the poor, the one that has under God, in English, that we can trust. On the point of his plan, what it's amazing to be, as one would say, under God, what he is.
Our heads. Family father, we're grateful tonight that we could have the freedom to be in this room. Pray that your hand would be upon us as we discuss matters that are important to our community. Or we also want to take a moment and lift up Councilman Merle, who is not well and needs your healing touch. We're trusting you for your very best for tonight. It's in Jesus' name we pray and everyone said.
I would be, uh, things from mayor council members and city staff. Does anybody have anything? I was able to attend the Alvarado Old Settlers reunion. Uh, in, in August, had a good program honoring our firefighter and police officer for their duty and it was pretty good. So, um, I wanted to do things, snowing up, getting ready to go. Everybody getting nice and cozy there. So, almost tumor. All right. Okay. Moving into our work session, I would like to join for the discussed question in relation to the budget report. Kind of the statement for August twenty twenty-three, Mr. Pecato.
Thank you, Mayor. We are at ninety, just almost ninety-two percent of the fiscal year. In our last month, we're starting to slow everybody down so we can um, begin to shut down this year. Uh, as we move into the next, uh, one of the things that you may have seen here expenditures, uh, 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 over revenues, which is um, when you look at a couple of things that the biggest thing that reflects that is down in, uh, non-departmental transfers, we moved out some bond money. It moved it, uh, into a, uh, out of the one account into CIP. So that's why it looks like that that particular line item is six thousand percent over budget. Uh, but it was a pretty fair amount of money that we moved there while we're doing our investment stuff. So that's why the expenditure looks off. It's actually not off by that far. Uh, we didn't have any major expenditures this month. Nothing broke that I'm aware of anyway. Um, and I'd be happy to take any questions that you have.
It's I know over again, our investment.
We're doing well. We've got several things moved over and we've got a lot of cash on hand that I have waiting on street projects to get rebid and stuff. So it's, some of that money's been moved into those investment accounts. They're doing well.
Do you have any other questions? Enjoy it.
You know, they did a great job. Just you're my keep missing side of it. But he said.
It's the staff on.
Yes.
We asked them, I asked them not to spend a bunch of money and they didn't.
No question. Well satisfied.
We've got an item two discussing a direction on proposed park dedication located on Joshua Meadows, Phase Three C. Um, I understand we've got some people here who are willing to speak about this. And if it's okay, then just go ahead and hear from it first. And I guess will it start with Brian or Bellamy? What time will you film it without company? What do you have to do that?
Um, I'm Brian Bellamy. I'm resident Joshua Meadows in twenty twenty Glen Hollow. And, uh, came to, uh, speak about the, uh, property out in Phase Three C. Um, it, I've been HOA president for a little over a year now. So, um, my understanding was that that property was set aside to be a park. Um, and given by, uh, the developer to the city, uh, do that. Uh, we've since learned that it is zoned out to be a detention, uh, area where water runs off. And, uh, of course, that was a surprise to us. Uh, wanted to find out a little bit of history if we can about where it's, what that land it was and kind of where all of this happened. And, uh, what we as a community can do and work together with the city. Uh, so we can resolve this in, um, a good way that benefits everyone. So, that's all I had for the second. So, just questions.
Chuck, did yourself a feel?
So maybe all that's with Joshua Meadows, but it's them up to. Come on, man. You know, I would chant the rhythm.
Did you forget?
Still Chuck Mayfield, still thirty thirty Big Springs. Um, also came to talk about the park. Hopefully tonight, at some point y'all can show a map. I don't know if y'all know where it is. We don't. Unless somebody else in the neighborhood does. I'm not exactly sure where they're going to put it. What bothers me is this has been gifted to the city, but there's a notation that the HOA for Joshua Meadows is supposed to be responsible for many. And let alone having a park in the neighborhood of one entrance, one way out. Our land is being zoned for drainage. So it's probably going to have issues. Where are people going to park? Who's going to enforce that? And then we got to pick up the tab on that. I don't like that. Yeah. Yeah. So honestly, that fight's probably going to be a Samlin, not with the city, but I just came down here to really clarify what's going on. And I think I've seen for a lot of us and say, we just really don't want that. We certainly don't want the HOA to throw a party and claim for it. Is if we're going to set a precedent where the HOA pays for a piece of property that doesn't belong to them. Then why don't they pay for the lawn for all the way yards? Because it's the same thing. It's just the city ownership instead of citizens. Really, that's all. More questions than that. I just want to state our position.
Thank you. Hey Chuck. And Jennifer.
Jennifer Gibson. I hate public speaking, so y'all just throw away. My name is Jennifer Gibson. We're at forty forty-four Running Brook Drive. Um, I'm on the same page as everybody else. We were under the impression and the belief that this was going to give it to the city. I don't know when things have changed or transpired to affect that. Um, my concerns are the water charge. Are who's going to be responsible for putting the bill for maintenance on this property? Um, my other concern is the drainage. I've been told that there is drainage issues with part of possibly flooding the properties that are south of that that are not Joshua Meadows. I don't know what that county where this is behind there, but, um, I want to make sure that any drainage issues, any flooding possibilities, anything like that, that that's all well addressed. For anybody that ever needs to take on a keep on that property, whether it be the city or the HOA. Just because I don't want legal, you know, issues down the road, tripling down. Um, so really and truly, I guess what I'm coming tonight is I'd like to table this and not make a decision on this until all the facts are out there and everybody can kind of have time to uh, discuss all of the possibilities and options and kind of get some clarification.
Um, is there anybody else here who would like to make a statement? Okay. Uh, at this time, we are going to recess into executive session to discuss a couple of things with our attorney. Uh, so we'll be right back.
Mayor, would you stay the time?
August being back order at six thirty-five. Pete Doc, would you like to address the question that we presented?
I will try. So the, the, the land dedication in question. Um, that many people are going to remember when Joshua Meadows was planted a number of years ago, I think probably better than twenty. Um, there was, there has always been a park in the third or fourth phase, um, of this development. So the initial parkland dedication was going to be this, uh, it's almost eight acres. That's in the newest Phase Three C. And after the, at some point after the flood study was done, um, for that section, the water detention that was going to be required uh, to catch all the, the storm runoff based on a hundred year storm, which all our detention ponds are, are built on. Um, it was going to encompass this entire piece of property, but almost all, not, not completely, but probably ninety percent of it. Our engineering design standards do not allow to convey park property that is a detention pond. So using that property as a park, um, to meet the city's requirements is not possible. Now, there can be implements put in there, but nothing permanent. You could put maybe a soccer goal, but you could set up a fence for a baseball field or, um, but when you start putting stuff in there, now you're talking about access, ADA compliance and lots of other things. Parking is also an issue. There's nowhere to park. So if you build a parking lot into this, um, probably the way I'd create a put it in there, the concrete won't make much difference, but if it's full of cars and a flood comes, that can be problematic. So the property has been designed and the flooding problems, um, detention ponds are designed to operate, um, when they're finished. Unfortunately, not while construction is, is going on. And so, uh, there's been other developments where these ponds have been in progress and there's been flooding downstream. But once these things are finished, that problem goes away. So we've asked, because there was four properties that were taking on a lot of water that followed out of this little subsidiary of Buffalo Creek that flows towards County Road seven oh five. Several properties took on quite a bit of water when we had some, some storms last year. Um, once the detention pond has been dug out and built, um, the overflow is in, the dam part is in, and there's two eighteen inch discharge culverts that allow water to drain. Uh, most of this pond, um, is two or three feet deep. It's not a real deep one. It's got a few trees in it. A lot of the brush has been taken out. Um, we invited last week the county engineer to come down and sit with us to talk to the homeowners because to explain now that it's done, here's the only thing that we can do now to guarantee that it's going to work as designed. We've got to have some rain. Uh, and so, but the engineer looked at the flood study. He looked at the design. He looked at the reports. He agrees that it will work as designed and it will not be a future flooding problem. As long as we don't have more than a hundred year flood, which, you know, we, we have certainly, we've had a few within the last hundred years, but it's not an everyday rain event. It will, it'll take several inches in a short period of time to overrun, um, that pond, but based on that. So they are content with that. Sandlin has agreed to clean up those properties. They're going to drain off those ponds, uh, dredge them, clean them out, uh, refill them. Uh, and he's working with those property owners, uh, to do that. Now that the pond is complete, that's all he wanted. So the question is, uh, is the ownership of this eight acres? Right now, Sandlin owns it. The city does not own it. Uh, it has not been conveyed to the city or anyone else. It, it's owned by Sandlin. And so the, the question is, is does the, is there a requirement for the HOA to accept and maintain that property? And I think that's a conversation between Sandlin and the HOA. Uh, and then at the same time, I think we need to research. Uh, we have an ordinance that requires, uh, for detention in new neighborhoods or any, uh, that piece of, um, open space, they have to, uh, HOA has to be formed and they have to maintain those properties. Joshua Meadows was initially planted prior to that ordinance. And so, um, I think we've asked our attorney to look into just what that means and how that, uh, how that meets our current ordinance. Um, but as it stands right now, um, I, I don't know if they have to accept it or not. And, but I just know that it is not suited for a park. Now, in the next phase, which had been designed, it's going through the engineering processes now. He has offered up another site for a park that, that would be off of Running Brook. Where it, where they'll extend a running brook, um, over by Blue Bird Court, I believe is the street. Um, it'll run out there just to the left. There was previously was a gas well on that site that has been capped. Um, and so that stuff has been taken down and I, I believe that because it wouldn't net him a whole lot of new lots, it wasn't worth the redraw to try to get more lots in there. He's offered that up as a park. It's, it's a better suited parcel that's bigger. Um, and, and we're looking at that right. I believe that that is going to work out and this is the phase that'll actually complete the development and, and the road will go out to County Road seven oh five and Joshua Meadows will be connected. That County Road seven oh five at that point and this park is closer to the, to the Running Brook side than that, but it, it's a little over, it's just under eleven acres. Um, and that right now is, is what, what the city is looking at. That's when we'll start working with him on to provide that open space. And then of course, you know, we'll do the surveys and, you know, see what we can put out there, what is wanted out there and, you know, just how much usable space. It's, it looks like there's going to be plenty of space. Um, and it, it, I mean, right now on paper, it, it all looks good. We'll know more when we get there, but what was offered up in Phase Three C is not suitable for a park. And in my opinion, the only maintenance for it, uh, there's, you know, it's not irrigated, so grass is not going to grow other than naturally the detention pond in Joshua, uh, Joshua Station that the city has on our property. We mow it three or four times a year. Uh, we mow and it gets, you know, ten or twelve inches tall and, um, you know, it, I mean, it, there's really no other maintenance to it. This is for us. And this one, I think there's, there's some trees in this one. Still some, some material trees that I doubt will be a problem, but other, I mean, I think that's going to be the extent of the maintenance. It'd be mowing it. Um, now what that would cost, I, I think you're probably talking about an hour for the, um, uh, you know, a tractor. I, I wouldn't mow it with a zero turn. I certainly didn't try to manicure the eight acres, but, um, that's the extent of the maintenance. And I mean, I guess you might could have some brush or debris at some point that would be a conalization. We haven't had that with ours. So that's kind of the extent. I mean, I, this kind of crept up on me too. I thought that, I knew there was going to be some detention on the property. I didn't realize it was eight acres worth. Um, until we got out there and got a look at it and looked at the flows. And so it, uh, when I called, I think what I called Jennifer said, hey, this is a problem. And, um, I just don't have answers for what your options are. But until we know here, um, that's, I don't think there's any decisions to be made tonight. Uh, until we get the information, but I'm happy to answer questions from anybody that has them if I can.
John, do you have any questions? Okay. Um, I hope that answers the question that we can answer for you. Do you have anything else you'd like to ask Mike this time?
Yes, sir. And I hear you writing to say that either does that the HOA have to take ownership and responsibility for it? Is that the bottom line?
I, I don't know.
Don't know that yet.
I don't know that yet.
Is there a way for to, to tell Santa to keep it in the main table?
That's a positive thing. I think there'd be a question between the HOA and Sammon because we don't, we don't. We're not part of that, part of that. It's got to, that's where we all do is fight, Jim.
Anybody else? Well, thank you all for showing up and, and expressing your concerns. Um, I'm sure we'll be discussing it later on. Uh, any other land that gets proposed to come to the city for service. I know that's one of the big things that they told you out here that you're going to have a nice target. So hopefully that'll be in the works here pretty quick.
And can I, Jennifer, are you the contact for the HOA? Is that okay to reach out to you? Okay. Did you leave us contact information for you? And then when we get some answers, we'll convey those to y'all and see. Some work.
I, I had a question. It's still there. Um, the, as far as the property goes, you said Sammon was going to retain ownership of it. But they enjoy it and manage it and what it sounded like maybe?
Um, no, my understa- my understanding is, is that he would convey the property to the HOA. Or they, he'd give it to you.
Okay. Do we have to accept it?
I don't know. That's, that's the question that we're looking at it on our side. Um, and, and we'll have that answer from our position soon, whether or not you have to with Samlin. That's going to be between you and Samlin.
Okay. The, the question I had for other reason for the question was if we were to have to take ownership of it or who would be responsible for the taxes? It could be the HOA and the taxes actually are for that in acres? If anybody.
Uh, it will, it would be the property owner. So yeah, whoever owns the property.
Is it actually self acted in?
Are y'all, are y'all five oh one C three? If you are, then it'll be taxes in.
Okay. Moving on to the next item, uh, discussion on reuse and recycling survey results. Amber.
I can be meeting Mayor and Council back in July, I believe, at the council meeting again, y'all had requested to do a survey to the citizens regarding um, the trash and recycling collection. So, uh, Alice and I worked together and got the survey out. We decided to leave it a good thirty days to make sure we got as much response as possible. Um, we do have the survey results and they were included in your packet. Um, it looks like the majority wants to leave this, the service as it is. Um, I didn't really see any negative comments with the service. They were quite favored for the most part, happy with the service. Um, so I'm open to the questions, suggestions, uh, able to adhere tonight and waste connections. Um, as I mentioned before, our contract is due February.
Can we pause just a minute? Anybody who wants to leave, feel free, go ahead. You're not going to bother me. Just pause just a second. Just let y'all in. Thank y'all for coming. Sorry, did it wrong. What they do with you. By the way, the policies of seven oh eight.
Thank you.
Good job. Okay. I, I'm hoping that you heard most of what I said. Um, the survey went out, uh, it looks like well over eighty-five percent was happy with the current service. Uh, Abel from Waste Connections is here. If you have any twenty questions about the, when we contract, the contract will renew in twenty twenty-four. So even if we were to pause and not do anything until the renewal. Um, here in the next couple of months, we are going to need to start looking at how we're going to go out for bid, what type of service do we want? Um, so really I just need direction. Um, I've spoken with Abel a little bit on the phone about price increases. If we wait until twenty twenty-four to, to make any type of changes, we are looking at you know, price increases. Um, but what he's proposed now is if we change the service now, basically we could prop, in my opinion, probably save some money, but it's, it's up to y'all as to which direction now we're going to do.
Change the service now. Do you mean extend what we've already doing or going, I guess, what eighty-five percent of the contract says?
Well, and I mean, we can either enable, you can be on this, we can keep the service as is and if we go on until the contract renews. And then we're going to have a, that means the total from them with new pricing. If we do, uh, wish to keep it twice a week to the same service or do we reevaluate then and look at some of the options that we have available.
When is twenty twenty-four this, the contract actually expire?
I think it's, um,
It's December.
I think, I think it's December.
I think it's in the year.
No, it's, it's before then. I'm glad.
I believe it is in December because that's when I can, when I'm allowed in CPI.
So in response to the CPI, we, we are, um, looking at a CPI increase. It's a consumer price, with the consumer.
Consumer price index. Yes. It's pretty standard in the contract. We can do it every year. We have not done a CPI in the past three years. So in fairness to some of our drivers and employees that, you know, get raises every year. It's just pretty much a pass through to help even out those expenses.
I think Alice did a good job of laying out in the survey that if we save what, what we have, we are potentially going to see a price increase, whatever. I mean, that was one thing that we, we have our opinion and I was on board with what you were presenting, but at the end of the day, it was laid out in, in that survey very clearly that if we stick with what we have today, we are going to you know, see a price increase and eighty-five percent of the citizens said, we want to save what we have. And I think it's, you know, we asked a question. Yeah. And not the answer. What do we disagree with it or not? I think something like that.
I think it's the easy way out. A lot of people just see, stay the way it is. It's, it's, it's just so easy in the no brainer. Um, if you truly look at, at the, the data, look at the cost. You know, I'm not sure which one I would have chose because, uh, it's been several months since I've sat and studied the, the, the differences. It, it, it wasn't staying the way it was. It was not my choice. Because it, it was not economically going to be as good as if we went ahead and bit the bullet.
Yes.
And did some things proactively locked in a rate. Got new recycled containers, did some things that are going to have to be done eventually. It would make the pickup easier. It was going to make less impact on our streets. There was, there was some benefits that we were going to see from it. That, um, everyday citizens don't understand. Because there's just not that much room to put that much information. We did, but, um, eight, eighty-five percent.
I see this one. I believe when you know it's on track. And if there's a sticker shop. Where we have to revisit, maybe this process that we've received a lot of feedback that when the price increases, say, you know, are we able to revisit possibly going to occupation?
Which I'm going to hold a process. That's what you're saying?
Well, no, I mean.
Can we modify?
So, so really, really what we do, um, you know, we, we've worked with the city of Joshua for so many years. Um, we're certainly going to be respectful of the survey and everything that was put forth. And, and I just want to make clear when you do surveys, it's very simple to put, I like how it is. Let's just leave it alone. And if you look at the services you have, you can put what you want on the curb. And it disappears.
It's a great service.
So, so when you look at that and, you know, if you're a resident, if, if it was me, you know, I live in Fort Worth. We don't have that option, but if it was me, I'd be like, well, that's easy. We'll go ahead and keep that. The reality is when, when you're in the industry, finding gentlemen on the back of a truck to pick up whatever's on the curb is incredibly difficult. You have turnover of fifty to sixty percent every year. These are young men, women. Uh, it's not a sexy job. Very difficult job. And in order to have good employees, you got to pay. And when you look down the street and with Pizza Huts paying delivery drivers twenty dollars an hour just to deliver pizza. Just imagine what you have to pay to keep really good employees on the back of the trucks. So when you look at the, the price increases and, and why, why it's necessary, it's not the big bad company trying to take advantage of the situation. It's just a really difficult job. And in order to do it. It's just a really difficult job. And in order to do it, we have to pay the employees. So that's, that's really what it comes down to. I understand. And, and as a company, we're very respectful of whatever the city of Joshua wants to do. And, and yes, we work with the city. If. We would love to put forth a proposal to keep the contract, even if it is as is. And if you're not happy with the proposal. You're free to go after it.
My question, I guess, to my security, do we have to know loud for quotes for the new contract?
There is an attorney general opinion that the answer is no, you don't have to.
Okay, so what if? We went ahead and said, let's work up pricing or continue with things the way they are. For another three years? Is that what we normally do on our contract?
Five years?
For, for another five years. Okay, and see what that cost is going to be. Then maybe at that point say, okay, is keeping our service the same, folks? This is what it's going to cost you. If we go to the containers, this is what it's going to cost you and do the survey again. When it got hard figures in front of what the cost difference could be. And, you know, if, if they don't vote for the containers, then we just stay where we are and, and people are gonna have to pay it.
So I think you sold us on the value of the automation.
Oh, it, it makes perfect sense.
But. The commonest concerns that I saw like on social stuff were about. That there was a lot of concern about the size of the containers and managing the size of the containers and, and, and it's a valid point for, for some people. And so. I don't think it's. I think it's responsible of us to, to take that into consideration, especially when, you know, we had a significant number of people that responded. I mean. I mean, we.
Over five hundred.
People are passionate about trash.
That's more than voting.
Yeah.
Change that thing to the, those containers, you're gonna stack this room full because eighty-five percent of people are smoking. And I'm not about to go against eighty-five percent.
At any point in time, we all go away from touching the trash can and go fully automated. Will it ever get to that point?
I, I will tell you this, any new business, a new city that we are bidding on, we will not, we do not bid on manual takeoff. Trash. We don't. I can say the same for the larger, my larger competitors, Waste Management, Republic Services. They do not bid on any new business that, that is manual trash takeoff. It's just too difficult to manage. Yeah. Now, I'm not gonna lose a city. I'm gonna try to do my best to keep the city, but I have to pass on those thoughts.
I was just curious if we're gonna face this sooner or if we do go to bid, that's maybe something that. Is a potential issue.
It could be, it could very well be in the. In the twenty-four bid that they, they force a change because it's, it's business wise what they have to do.
Right.
And we, we have to consider that.
So there really not only one company that can bid, he.
But he's telling you that these other companies don't do hand pickup.
There, no.
The, the Stone Age, this is twenty twenty-three and they, they're trying to get automated because it's, it's more economical for them.
I understand that. Dale's saying, you know, if you're saying go out there and give it high bids so we can push this?
No.
That's what he's saying.
What anybody say.
That's what he's saying.
And, and.
That's what you wanted to hear.
I'll be very transparent. You, you're gonna have companies out there that will, and, and they're gonna be mom and pop companies. Smaller companies and, you know, but obviously, you know, I, I care about my company, I must speak very highly of it, but you don't know what you're getting. With a smaller company. Are the trucks gonna be kept up? You know, so on and so forth. But you're gonna have competitive bids.
But I think your company doesn't outstanding job. I'm not saying anything against you. Eighty-five percent of people don't want this name changed and that's the wrong stuff.
We can respect that. Well, this is not an act, not a night. This was an informative thing.
Yeah.
Um, I'd say that we kick this can down the road until December of next year. Um, this is not something we have to change immediately or make a decision out of the air. And so we've got a little time to, to see what works out on this. Abel, thank you very much for showing up tonight.
Absolutely. It's an honor to serve the city.
As you can see, out of the five hundred plus recent respondents, eighty-five percent, I absolutely love you guys. So. But appreciate it.
Abel, how much time should we give you if this renovation is in December?
Really, I, um, I, I believe that up to the city because remember, if the sooner you do this. The more time you have to do an RFP if that's the option you choose to go. So I would give you time, yourself times for an RFP if he needs to do so.
Okay.
Great. Thank you for coming back.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Thank you.
A.
Mayor, so staff has asked to look at some recommendations and where there are some options available to us to. Make some changes to the food truck ordinance that would make it, um, easier and. Um, a better opportunity for some of these food trucks if they chose to, to come into Joshua. And so we took a look at what we currently do. We compared with some other ordinances and I, I put some, uh, notes in a memo in or to you. Um, and one of the specific questions was, should we? Uh, change the order to allow food trucks to go on vacant lots? And I think what we came up with is that the state requirement for a. Uh, availability of a restroom facility is absolutely mandated by the state. And so there's a, we're in a five hundred foot rule. And to meet that, we looked at some vacant lots, um, just randomly. None of those would have met that requirement. There's also a parking requirement, um. And, and a few other things, a place for trash and so forth. Uh, I, I'm not sure that there's anything that we can do. By allowing, by adding a vacant lot, I don't think it's gonna make any difference because that requirement is still gonna be there. That's, this put in state law that, that we have to assure that they have that. What we can do. Uh, right now, um, our ordinance, uh, requires a conditional use permit. For a food truck to come in, whether it's for eight hours or three days or whatever. And that's a time consuming. Process to get it. Has to go to P and Z, then it has to come to council for approval. We can ease that burden by switching, changing to a special use permit. That's done in-house by staff. They can turn in the same required documents for. The agreement with the property owner for the restroom is all of those things that we have to have. We allow them for three days. We can track those three days. They have to leave at night and come back. Uh, that's easier to keep up with and, and, you know, a lot of times we can get those permits out in a day. We have a process for special use permits. It's kind of the same thing as like a special event permit where. Department heads can look at it, have an option to see it, sign off on it, and everybody knows what's going on. That is something that, that, that we could change that would make it easier. Permit within a couple of days versus maybe a month, depending on where in the month they, they turned it in. So I don't, I don't, I wouldn't recommend any other changes other than that. Certainly do, however you guys look at it. I, we have had some, some feedback from some local restaurants. And so I, I've looked at some numbers just, just for information. We've got forty-nine food service establishments in the city. Um, of those they generate or combined, they generate. Um, three hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year in sales tax. Um, which comes to, you know, thirty-one thousand dollars per month. And it's fourteen percent of the total sales tax collected. So, um, the sit-down restaurants were, I guess, the ones that. Um, that we heard from one of the owners, those I spoke to again today. I think once he kind of understood where we were going and why he. Initially were concerned that we were just gonna let food trucks pop up all over where we're competing with them, where they made investments in brick and mortar and. They can't sell at the same price. And so there was some concern. I think we're gonna see these food trucks in special events at churches, at, you know, fundraising events, Fourth of July. Holiday events sometimes, I, I think is where it's gonna happen. I don't think. That there is a line of food trucks waiting to come into Joshua if we. Allow them to go on any lot because that requirement is still gonna be there that they have to have that restroom facility. So, you know, I, I guess really the, the only meaningful change would be if we change from conditional use to a special use, a little easier to get.
Um, I don't necessarily have any objection about changing to a special use permit, especially to make the process easier on, on the staff. I don't think we. You know, our concerns that we talked about before, we're not against, you know, making. It, you know, make it the city available for food trucks to come in. But. If making a change to our ordinance to allow them on an empty lot, if we're still saying there's not really any difference that it would make, then I don't see. Reason to change that because if, you know, leave that in place, maybe put the option to the special use permit. Um, because again, you know, the type of board is working on a project to try to create. You know, an area that is going to have the food trucks park. Um, for. That's what it's called. Yeah. Um, you know, have a specific area. They're allowed to come in in other areas if it's appropriate, if there's parking. Um, but I think it's a special use permit option would make it easier on staff. I think that should be considered. I've heard we just don't want to see, I think the parking and, and making sure that people are not just assuming, because not everybody is going to. Always go with the permit before they set up shop. So at least trying to have ordinances in place. If they do, at least look at those. It would maybe help determine the permanent setting.
You know, we, we get the, I, I think there's a lady that comes out from time to time and sells tamales. Out of the back of her car, you know, she doesn't really have a trailer or a truck. She just pulls up somewhere and does it. Um, I used to see her every now and weekends. I don't know how often she comes. I'm, I'm not aware of. Either food trucks that have just. I mean, there may have been some that I haven't seen, but I don't think it's a huge, it's not a huge problem at this point. We don't get a whole lot of requests for them. Usually that's some sort of a holiday event or something.
I mean, I wasn't here about the original discussions and I kind of read some of the notes, but. I mean, I, I mean, in my personal opinion, I think, you know, we are trying to build a food truck quarter. So, um. It's kind of my stance. I don't think we should open it up to, and then comments. And then give them part in the eye. Yeah, pretty much.
Well, I, how to contribute, um. I think it's pretty clear that it's going to be, you know, we have requirements. So. Why are we controlling people, you know? If, let's say, Napoli's wants to have a food truck in their parking lot, I mean, if they have an arrangement, why not allow that? But I think.
And we would.
It allows.
Yeah, it does.
That, and that's what I'm saying. Keep, keep it this current.
Right.
I'm not, I'm able to that.
But it would take a month to get that permit done currently.
If we change that to fast track.
And.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Especially after, absolutely.
Um, two questions. What would be the length of these permits? If someone wanted to set up in the food park, would it be a, a running permit or would they have to renew it every week? They have to renew it every month? That permit fee, would it just be a one time? And then by adversely, if it was a setup on a vacant lot or. Napoli's parking lot. Would that permit be that weekend? And then they'd have to get another permit for another weekend and another permit? How, how would the permit process?
Well, it worked. I, I think Molly is working through, um, the business plan on that. Now, my, my. Initial thought would be that we'll, we try to sign those people up for a longer period of time. Um, where they can set, I mean, that's what it would be for those six or eight positions. Let them, they could come and stay there and come back night after night if they wanted to do it for. I don't know, we'd look at thirty days. We, what are, we haven't really got there yet. Currently it's three days. They can come in for three days and then they gotta go.
They, and the.
They gotta go at least. Now, there's not a limit on the permit. They can come back and get another one. Um, so, and that may be something that we want to take into account. Like, do we want to limit that? Or, you know, right now it's not a problem. So. Yeah, there's not a problem trying to fix, but.
How does, uh, this, this was.
Molly, time in here. If I'm saying something, you're having a different thought about.
No, you're exactly right. Now, you know, this is gonna require a PD anyway. And so I think we're gonna probably once we figure out all the specifics, it'll be in the PD. But he is, he is right. You want them in there for more long-term, like for a month or even longer. Uh, we might limit it to thirty days, just in case if there is any issue, we have the ability to not renew it. But right now, that's our, our thinking is to do thirty days.
And under a PD, it'd be a different set of rules. So we have our rest.
Correct.
Yeah.
Right.
One of the, well, Michael Austin does it. They have a zoning classification. So you take the piece of property and zone it for food. Food truck park. And then whoever operates it, it deals with, uh, who comes on and comes, each, each one would, would. It may still get a permit for, for, for health reasons. But they can move on and off and you don't say, you don't have like a three-day requirement. And if someone on bottom was awesome, or basically they're permanent. But you initially zone their property as a food truck park and then the details are worked out by the, by the operator of that. It, it, it complies with our.
The other question was, was about restrooms. Are these restrooms gonna be required? Are they public restrooms or just private restrooms for the, the workers only? Because the way I read it, it, it sounds like it's worded that it's for sanitary reasons for the workers. That it has to, that we have to have that anywhere. Is that, am I reading it right?
It's the state.
That's, that's kind of the way I, I.
State is not requiring us to build public restrooms.
Yeah.
Providing us to make sure that we. Require restrooms to be present for a food truck or facility. Okay, I just wanted to clarify that, that we're not gonna have public restrooms pop up and. Any bird, we, we're gonna have to.
Well, that was one of our considerations is, you know, most of these food trucks have a place to wash their hands. They've got a little dill. So now we're gonna have little portlets popping up right behind these food trucks.
Right.
And so that, we, nobody wants that.
And they have a food drain system for those, if they've got onboard facilities of washing hands, they gotta dunk somehow. They either gotta pull it out and dump it. We're gonna have to provide sewage to it.
The only problem, questions that I have is, how do you collect sales tax?
I was thinking that same thing. They have to follow with the, the state. Their, their business files monthly with the, the state. And the problem is, where are they located? Are they, is their business located out of Cleveland? Or is it, and they're doing business in Joshua for this special thing? Or, and that's, that's a age-old problem with any type of business that, that moves around and, and does things. Um, you get an air conditioning company out of Birlston to come into Joshua, work on the air conditioner and charge you the sales tax. Does Joshua get that sales tax because of both Birlston?
No, no.
So that's, that's something that's decided down in Austin. If you worry about cash, though. Exactly.
Yeah, you never catch up with them.
Yeah.
How much, uh, when you tell them that these permits are, how much of these permits is it gonna take care of the time of our staff is gonna have to take out of? Who are already overworked?
I don't think it's gonna take any more time for this than it does to walk them through P and Z and the council. Putting that stuff together. Code enforcement would do looking outside for us, um, and checking on it. I, like I said. The, the number of these that we're gonna see, I don't see it being a huge burden.
And one of the things Mike and I had discussed concerning that, in, in their agreements. Yeah, if you leave the side dirty, the, I guess, the sponsor who's ever like to use their restrooms. Will be given citation that you gotta turn this up. If we have one, we'll bill them for it. So, uh, and if we can go back to the code, the, the cost of the permit is something that we can, can put into, you know, it, it's, it's just. Clear. Um, the seventy-two hour thing, I think is great. That they can't be there for more than seventy-two hours. I would like to also say that it has to be gone for a minimum of seventy-two hours as well. Those can't just pull off and turn around and come back. Hey, I was gone down, back like they did with some of the hotels. Yeah, I check down, check back in, you know, we, we, we want a separation. And, um, um, you know, the, the stuff that's gonna happen now at, at Station one seventy-four is, is gonna be separate from what we're doing with this ordinance. Again, we're just making it easier for staff, we're making it easier for people who might want to do this as a promotion of their business, promotion for the employees, so on and so forth. By, by going to the special use as opposed to having it go through that long drawn out process now. And right now, it's just a matter of telling staff, go ahead and draw up the ordinance, and then it'll be an action I can force to vote on. So.
Mary, let me correct myself, we're gonna do this under a special event permit, not a special use permit. And I think they're twenty-five dollars.
Yes, something around there.
Special event permit, you mean, just for the pop ups? The PD later will pay for.
Be more long term, yes, sir, yeah.
Okay.
So, I guess we're agreeing with them, we'll have staff go ahead and draft the, the changes to the ordinance.
Which changes?
The, the special event. What about, do we want to have them put in there seventy-two hour maximum in place, seventy-two hour minimum when they come back? Then we'll look at that, or do we want to see how it goes?
What we currently have, they can be there for three days and then they have to leave.
I believe so, yes.
So, so that's already in there? Okay. So I guess staff will work up that ordinance and we'll look at it, uh, when it's ready.
So, Ms., do you need one to kind of weigh, or, I guess, more information about, for the standalone food truck park and those requirements and the zoning ordinance, hold off on that?
Yeah, we'll hold off on that.
Okay.
Yeah. We'll wait and see how all that works.
Yeah, we can, we can wait and notice and tell.
Okay, uh, there's nothing else, we'll move on to the couple of four. Uh, we already have people, is anybody else wondering what they're speaking about? Okay, uh, we do have the protocol media. And let's see, I'm just happy to see how you're doing, see the thing. Thank you. I'll go ahead and read this, I'll put that to you. Okay. Where is the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties and bodies and principles, our unit of government and a republic dedicated to rule by law, and September seventeenth, twenty twenty-three marks the two hundred and thirty-sixth anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitution of the Constitution. And whereas it is fitting and proper to afford official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to patriotic celebrations that will commemorate it, and whereas public law nineteen twenty-five guarantees of issuing proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeenth through twenty-third as Constitutional Week. Down there for I, Scott Kim, will mayor the City of Joshua, Texas, and hereby proclaim this week, September seventeenth, tw- the twenty-third, twenty twenty-three, as Constitutional Week. In the City of Joshua, further I ask our citizens to keep in front of the ideals of the Constitution, the framers of the Constitution had in seventeen eighty-seven by diligently protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through the guardian of our liberties.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, at this time, I'm gonna skip the consent agenda, agenda, and we're gonna move into our regular agenda, and we're going to go to item number seven. Item number seven, uh, this does consider possible action uh, on resolution authorizing execution on behalf of the City of Finance, Financing Use Agreement for the City of Joshua and Joshua High V and National Development Corporation. With all another matters incident and delayed thereto, and provided an effective date. Ms. Holloway?
Um, if I may, turn it up to Mark.
Thank you. My name's Mark McLean, I'm with Samco Capital Markets, I work with the city when they borrow. I've seen Andrew Freeman, my partner here, I've been here, uh, many, many times over the past several years. Um, number seven is really your funding tool to pay for number eight. So we were doing, number eight is the borrowing for a million two fifty for various parking permits. Um, we can borrow to the city cheaper and more efficiently because we have the full payment credit of the city. But we don't want to tie our taxes, add the law and taxes to this, so we've worked with the four B Corporation to make payment on these bonds. So, last week, four B met, was it this week?
This past Monday.
Monday, four B met, authorizes ordinance, it's basic, or their resolution, basically says we'll make the bond payment that's upcoming. Um, we then, today, and that's gonna be the next item, we sold the bond, and I'll tie onto that on, not item eight, but seven is your share of the joint resolution that EDC passed. Basically saying, I'm accepting their money to make payment or budget for the upcoming bond payments. That's number seven. Is I gonna go to number eight?
We could, if, if you want to do it, do two separate motions after you hear number eight, you can.
Okay, go ahead and go to number eight.
Number eight is the, uh, discuss, consider possible action on the ordinance authorizing issuance of City of Joshua, Texas Combination Tax Certificate of Oblig- Certificate of Obligation two thousand twenty-three. At your own direction, we went out and bid these. Uh, Andrew Freeman, again, my partner who's out here, did a really good job, the market has really gotten tough. Two years ago, we would have had eight to ten bidders on this, and you have a Juddia, we, we get three bids from, well, four bids from three different companies. Uh, you would have heard certainly of JP Morgan Chase Bank, that's the best bid. Uh, we also have Webster Bank and Amagi Bank, both very large regional banks. Uh, JP Morgan Chase, perhaps largest in the country. Um, they gave us two bids, their best bid was four point two three percent, had a couple thousand dollars worth of expenses that we'll have to pay, and came in with a true interest cost, which our actual borrowing cost, four twenty-six. Their second option was four forty-one, but allowed us to pay it off early, which was not anything we requested and wasn't quite comparable to the others. Webster Bank was four sixty-two and Amagi Bank four sixty-eight with, with all the expenses. Uh, our budget, the last time we ran budgets, were four and a half percent, so if you look at the best bid versus the second and third, or third and the fourth bid, we're right in, in the middle, so we really thought, uh, we landed about where we thought we would. Of course, we wanted to be better, uh, the last couple of weeks have been really tough in the bond market, that they had met. Uh, said they weren't raising rates this week, but they're gonna raise them probably before the end of the year, which sent interest rates up even higher this, today. Regardless, it's about forty thousand dollars lower than what we were projecting. With the approval of the resolution prior to this item number seven, it won't have an impact on your, uh, on your tax rate. That's everything I have, and happy to address any questions you may have. Our recommendation for us is to go with JP Morgan Chase. Non-cold, yes, sir.
The only difference between the two is able to pay off early in twenty twenty-nine.
And the reason we don't think that's worth it, we have, if we have come across cash, we have other bonds that we can just pay off. So let's lock in this, the benefit is not that great, it's about twenty thousand dollars, cutting off interest for a ten thousand dollar gain, which is worth something, but the most likely chance is you leave it outstanding, if we have cash available, we'll use, pay off other bonds.
I have any questions for us?
Is it a matter of the city having cash available, or is it a matter of board?
It could be either one. It is the city's debt. The four B board, if they had, had cash, they could use it to, to pay it down. They could also, in today's environment, and who knows what it's gonna be in the future, you can invest with higher than the rate you're paying. And that's typically where we've been, other than the last five, six years. The, the, the investment rate's typically higher because these are tax exempt bonds. Investment rates are taxable, so the benefits just didn't, didn't seem that way, the gain.
Yeah, questions?
Sure.
Okay. Okay, uh, I'll accept a motion on, uh, item number seven. Um, uh, agree to the financing agreement, the City of Joshua, the, if I get my corporation.
Make a motion that the algorithm execution of the.
Okay, the motion I've told you, said goodbye Dakota, who would accept the, uh, finance use agreement with the City of Joshua and the, we have Miami Development Corporation, is there any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous, okay, item number eight, I have a motion. It's, it's two separate ones, because it's, so. So right here, you got two separate ones.
Yeah, we, we did it on the resolution, now it's a video. Yeah, you like the motion, they're gonna be on it.
Okay, so I have a motion by Mike, seconded by Johnny.
We discussed by that motion, what it's called.
If you go with, go JP Morgan option A. To, uh, if we, the City of Joshua, Texas, putting my combination tax, limited pleasure review script, you know, we actually, seriously, of course, can do with JP Chase.
Yes.
Any discussion? Okay, all those in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you, and Mary, thank you for moving me up, I've got, we've had dinner with my daughter, we do, I've had a TCU. And I also meant to say that, that the city's finances have never been as good shape as they are now. Um, it's something I know staff works hard on, you know, council, you've talked about where you were budget wise and how you operated the year, but every year, and, and, you know, I was listening with, forgot your name, but, but, you know, I've worked with the mayor when we did this city hall. The city's got stronger every single year, uh, probably the last fifteen or twenty years, so, uh, you all really do a good job, and she's proud of what you've accomplished here, uh, in Joshua.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
So, thank you. Uh, we're gonna move down to item number thirteen, discuss, consider the possible action by board appointments, without us.
In your package, you have a list of board applicants, these are for new positions, um, where the terms are expiring. I emailed, um, each council member a list of all the applications that was not redacted, but online they are redacted. I placed them in the staff report, a place where they requested to be, um, and if they requested other ones, I made contact with them and see, they were okay, we moved them to a different area.
Okay, um. So, the first one, uh, Kim Carter, and that's on the, the type D.
Correct.
Okay.
And she's currently on type D.
Place five, place seven, uh, Brittany Lawson, report, replacing for the humans.
Correct.
Okay, uh, alter, uh, you don't pitch to? Uh, yeah, I didn't have paid one. Final, okay, so. Place one, Lynn Walden, uh, would be reappointing him, place three, Bill Thunderbolt would be, uh, Jerry Young, Kim. Place five, Kim Carter. Um, place seven, Brittany Lawson, the alternative one is vacant, and Sarah Watts, right here. Okay, and alter number two, Carl Heeding. Carl, okay, and, or Shelley Anderson for the, the second, uh, alternate here. Carl, not to be, they're both before, but, but came this evening, uh, wanted to be on type A. I'm doing type D. No, but that is, what else? Got you on both, type D and type A. I think those, uh, alter, on, alter, on, on type A, but you wanted to be, or type D, you wanted to be on type A. They're gonna be on alter in both of them.
He, yeah, he put, um, he put alternate, I mean, place B, um, as a second choice, so I put him there, since they're both alternates.
So, okay, so, so looks, looks like you're looking for a different position. And type A from, from press, I, I, okay. All right, so, uh, do I have a motion on the type D? Uh, and I guess, uh, Shelley as the alternate number two on type A, or type B, excuse me. So, um, there, no legal problem with that?
No. Okay, they're, they're both nonprofit and corporation.
All right, so, uh, let's do type B, all those one big group, will somebody have an objection to that?
Don't move for approval, all the candidates, maybe don't type me, okay?
Okay, so I have a motion by Johnny, seconded by Shelley, to approve Glenn Walden for place one on type D, Bill Thunderbolt, and place three. Kim Carter in place five, Brittany Lawson in place seven. Sarah Watts as alternate number one, and Shelley Anderson as alternate number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Let's go back to page one. Okay, animal control, position four is vacant, uh, Jerry Willman. Willman, president.
Yes, sir.
Jeffrey, I'm sorry. I gotta get my glasses. All right, yeah, great. Um, what makes you interested in animal control?
I, I guess, grown, uh, grown up with animals all my life, and I used to volunteer at the place where women and men support work, and something.
Awesome. Okay, so, we have a motion for Mr. Willman, for the animal control.
I'll make a motion for both, Mr. Willman.
Okay, we have a motion by Angela, seconded by, uh, Mike, for Jeffrey Wal- Willman for position four on the animal control board, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations, welcome forward. Okay, library board, seat two. It's currently vacant, Angela Nichols. Seat three, Sarah, uh, Bremuth. Uh, does anyone's funny for a young library?
Yeah, it's easy.
It's, it's a, it's a fun board. Okay, so, uh, uh, what's the motion?
I make a motion to approve the library board.
I'll say, okay, got a motion by Mike, seconded by Johnny, to appoint Angela Nichols to seat two on the library board, and Sarah Bremuth to stay on the seat three, any discussion? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Okay, type A, EDC, okay, place one, David Morgan. Place three, Johnny Waltrip. Place five, uh, it's Isma, Isma Anderson. Place seven, Roger Harley, and alter number one, Mr. Keating. Hey, Harley, nice to see you here this evening, nice to be here, so what, what's exciting to you about type A?
I have no idea.
Okay. Uh, I've known Roger put a lot in, lot of years, uh, if I needed real three, he'd probably be the second person I'd call.
Yeah.
Your wife is very, but, but, I consider you two, but I know you do the highly and stuff, I, I can't afford it and stuff. Yeah. Um, and, and he and his wife are, have started a new brokerage, real estate brokerage hearing, and they're trying to get something here in Joshua uh, to, to get an office over here, so. Uh, anybody else have any questions?
Are we able to write in somebody for, um, for alternate one? For the alternate two, some bid turns their, their application. We had discussed, uh, because we had, we had run into a couple of, a couple of, uh, times, well, we didn't have four. So we had had a discussion, uh, having an A number, if we didn't have a full, an alternate, having an A number being the alternate on the B board, and a B number being the alternate on the A board, so wherever, I guess somebody didn't fill in that. To be the alternate on A board, but since we have a. Be able to write somebody in.
You may, you have two options, you can go ahead and appoint someone, or you can wait to the next meeting, give him time to turn in an application, but I got a couple of his applications on board. Yeah, he turned in two this time.
And we're really, it's really just so that we're in a in a situation where you don't have four.
He knows that for me.
Yes.
All right.
I make a motion to be approved, type A.
Okay, so I got a motion by Mike seconded by Shelley. For the type A, C board, not uh place this be David Morgan in place one, Johnny Waltrip in place three. Isley Henderson, place five. Roger Barley, place seven. Carl Heeding, alternate number one, alternate number two, Mr. Glenn Walden. Is there any discussion? All those favor? Unanimous. The heritage preservation committee, Chris Maddox, reappoint the place three and Jeffrey Willing as a zoning place five. Okay, so welcome to the business.
Unfortunately, this board only meets once or twice a year.
Okay, do I have a motion? I've got a motion by Angela seconded by Dakota, Chris Maddox for place three on heritage preservation. And Jeffrey Willing on place five. Is there any discussion? All those favor? Unanimous. Okay, planning and zoning, seat number three, Jerry Moore, reappointed. Seat number four. Michael Frazier, Frazier. But have you here with us this evening, so. Brett Gibson, reappoint seat five and Kathy Staley, alternate number one. Mr. Frazier, what do you know about P and Z?
I started in twenty twenty and twenty one on the planning and zoning. I worked for railroad, so our schedule's got mixed up, so I had to drop out.
All right. Okay, okay, any questions, discussions? I'll accept a motion.
Move the prime candidate's statement.
Okay, I have a motion by Johnny seconded by Shelley to approve Jerry Moore seat three in planning and zoning. Michael Frazier, seat four, Brett Gibson, seat five, Kathy Staley, alternate number one. Any discussion? All those favor? It's unanimous. Okay, zoning board of adjustments, place one, reappoint Jerry Moore. Place three, reappoint Lynn Walden. Place five, reappoint Jerry Morris. Alter one, John Walden. Alter two, still vacant. Jeremy, Jeremy, so Jeremy, I'm sorry. Okay, any questions? I'll take the motion. Okay, I have a motion by Shelley seconded by Mike on the G P A, place one, Mr. Jerry Moore, place three, Lynn Walden. Place five, Jeremy Morris, alternate one, John Walden. Any discussion? All those favor? It's unanimous. So a lot of our board members are taken care of. What do you do these?
Thank you all for volunteering.
Yes. Hello, Alice, we had a training scheduled for October.
Twenty first.
Twenty first, that's when she'll be getting it all. I highly recommend that when she has that training, show up because there's a lot of things that you need to know before you come to the gates. She'll get with you with all the. All right, thank you all very much. Okay, let's get back to the order of meeting. And we'll go back to consent agenda. Item number one. Discuss the discussion and possible action on meeting minutes of the August fourth, twenty twenty three and August seventeenth, twenty twenty three meetings. Discuss considering possible action on an addendum to Burt's soft LLC master services agreement. Item number three, discuss considering possible action on development agreements. Item number four, discuss considering possible action on the resolution of minimum capitalization policy. And item five, discuss considering possible action on the ordinance, meaning the city's current subdivision ordinance relative to adequate subject facilities, additional and revised definitions, clarifying flat processing applications, revising both preliminary and final class middle requirements. Plan plan views for water distribution and wastewater collection system. And the approval of water and wastewater improvements by Jason and BWSC. What's BWSC? Okay, we can look these item at a time, or we can do them as a group. Okay, item number one, approve the minutes for August twelfth and August seventeenth. I have a motion by Angela seconded by Shelley to approve the minutes as presented for the August twelfth and August seventeenth meetings. Any discussion? All those favor? Unanimous. Item number two, discussing certain possible action on the addendum to the Burt's soft LLC master services agreement. Mike, you want to explain what that is, real please?
That's the long, the long and short, this is, this addendum was supposed to be part of the original agreement that was signed previously by the council, it was in Burton's left off. The addendum is just part of that agreement, most of the court and the money that we're gonna have to pay out. It was just left off and so they added it to be signed and added to the veteran master service.
Any discussion? All to the motion.
I agree that we accept the addendum to the Burt's watch.
They have a motion by Phil seconded by Dakota to accept the addendum to the Burt's soft LLC master services agreement. Any discussion? All those favor? Unanimous. Item number three, discuss and consider and possible action on the government agreements. This is our standard monthly. Votes here, so any questions? I'll take the motion.
Make a motion to approve the Phil agrees.
And a motion by Mike seconded by Johnny to accept the development agreements. All those favor? Unanimous. Item number four, discuss considering possible action on resolution of minimum capitalization policy. Give us an overview on that one.
They amend the dollar thresholds. And then provide for some information on capital assets, it's mostly mainly just housekeeping. Marshes or anything significant that we change in here?
Most of the thresholds, there's no different ranges and this kind of thing that to make it more uniform threshold. The auditors, the thirty minutes, so.
Any questions? I'll take the motion.
Move the progress, Lucy, maybe capitalization policy.
We've got a motion by Johnny seconded by Mike to approve the resolution of minimum capitalization policy. Any discussion? All those favor? Unanimous. Okay, item number five, discuss considering possible action on and or disseminating the city's current subdivision ordinance relative to adequate facilities at all. It's just a partnership.
Yeah, real quick overview for you. We had our development consultant make some look at the our current subdivision ordinance and and he had some suggestions for additional changes on some technical issues. And so what this is, we did the amendments last month that were mandated by the new statute, gives us some more of the technical things like like clarifying that that the city doesn't provide water and sewer services. So we I took his revision and and put it in a revised one, and and ordinance revising our subdivision. I I think mostly they're pretty highly technical.
That's why I didn't do the explanation.
Yeah. Session by session.
Any other questions?
It makes sense. Because I was worried as we got here, but it's just cleaning up language and finishing off what we did last month. Exactly right, I understand.
All right, I'll accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve so that so the amendments.
Okay, I've got a motion by Mike seconded by Angela to approve and ordinance missing the city's current subdivision ordinance. Any questions? All those favor? Unanimous. Okay, back into the regular agenda. Item number one. Our public hearing in eight oh seven on the growth budget for this year beginning October first, twenty twenty third, and then it's September thirty of twenty twenty three. This could be got.
Well, this is the day some of us have been waiting months for to arrive. So we at the last meeting, we went over the proposed annual budget for fiscal year twenty three, twenty four. This budget is estimated to raise more revenue than last year by the amount of two hundred twenty four thousand, seven hundred sixty four dollars, which is a six point five nine percent increase. Tax revenue could be raised from new property added to the tax rolls this year is two hundred fifty five thousand, one hundred and forty eight. This is a the budget's middle, there's been a few minor changes from last month that we made some changes. And those have been included in here. The proposed appropriations for funds of eight point two million dollars. It is a balanced budget that does use some reserves. And expenditures or revenue over expenditures. Changes small amounts, just out of a few quick changes that we made, but the amount comes to grand total. Eight point two one seven million dollars. And the revenues over expenditures are seventy two thousand, three hundred and eighty one dollars. This budget includes the five percent cost of living raise for employees. It has new medical benefits for healthcare. Dental. Eye vision coverage. Much better than what we had, I think you heard you approved that last month. Brittany and Amber did a fantastic job of working down to something that has been very welcomed by the staff. And so we certainly appreciate that. There is funding for fire apparatus, there's funding for additional vehicles that is needed in our fleet plan. The the most significant change that's in here is we are looking at the purchase of a outdoor soundstage using hotel motel funds. That is one of the categories that is allowed, we did go through and find that. And so we were hope to order that using hot funds, we can pay cash for it. And it's a hundred and eighty seven thousand dollars, I believe. That's what that comes to, that'll leave us still have a fund balance there, but it's twelve to eighteen months to build it, so it's but it is include, that is the biggest change in this budget. Everything else says as it was presented last month, I'm happy to take any questions.
Prejudice versus business total, we don't actually have to draw from reserves to that one.
Well, what we're doing is we're using, we pulled leftover funds from this year, they haven't made it to reserves yet, but in essence, yes, that's that's what's happening.
Just like rolling over the balance.
Correct.
How much are are we looking at that? Three hundred eighty thousand dollars.
Well, if you don't do anything with this seventy two, it'd be less than. We left it there in case there was something that 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 you guys wanted to see additional or if there was something you wanted to take a look at adding at last minute, we left that money in there. If you don't do anything with that money, then obviously it'll it'll just go into reserves.
I had a little bit of the discussion. I don't know if any of you pay attention, when you you pull up and you look around here and over at the police station. Both these buildings have emergency generators. And they are small, they they will not allow these buildings to fully operate during the power outage. I asked Mike to check to see, did you get your pricing back?
I do not have the numbers.
Okay, I'm asking to check and see what the cost would be to upgrade those, leave, fully run both buildings in an in an emergency. The water, the heat, the air conditioning, the lights, the computers, everything, everything we need. The snow again, the thing we had, you know, we had fire department working and pretty much everything else had to be closed down because no power. I think it would be a good idea with these excess funds to at least get one of these buildings with a generator big enough to, you know, that it's going to cost that much, so we might be able to get both buildings. Would you all be okay with him pursuing that and spending that money on that?
There was a situation as far as the city hall. How how many, you know, how many of the staff could not function? And they had to work alone, if there was a emergency situation for the building, I think the servers.
The current generator was mainly put in to maintain the servers and there at one time there was we could activate the outdoor warning system from here. Actually, we still can, it's it's still in there, and so and there's a couple of offices could could operate, everything else would be shut down. The 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 biggest benefit that we would get if if we put this thing in city hall is that it could be used as a place kind of for shelter, warming station, or as a place to take in some people maybe that have lost power and they needed a place to stay and keep warm for a period of time. We have not used this facility for that before, of course, in a power outage, we we would probably be out too. The fire station, of course, has a generator capable of of operating the entire building, it was designed that way. But in a disaster event like that, that's not the best place to be stacking people up, it's going to be busy enough as it is, so the police department makes sense to to operate. To be able to operate fully. Challenge there is, there's two panel boxes over there, so you know, I'm not real sure how that's going to work out. We're we're taking a look at it, but I I guess depending on why the power is out would be a question, you know, if it's ice and snow on the road. May not be able to get people here anyway, it 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 would mainly be able to serve as a place that we could open up to let people in if if they need to be let in.
I disagree with upgrading the the generators for just the sole purpose, we're we're trying to make a plan to not be here, certainly longer. And I think it'd be a waste of money to to invest in that right now if we make a plan in the future to build.
I think the police department is a must to be able to survive in the weather. Because when it's snowing and ice on the ground, they can't stay home.
Yeah, that's true.
And they have to be here.
And they have to be here and they have to operate the phones and radios and so forth. And as far as the generator, I assume we just taking with us.
Yeah, we can. And and we would repurpose the ones that we had. Animal Shelter doesn't have one. Public Works doesn't have one. They they can be moved. Um, now, it depending on the size, we've got the the kilowatt hours um figured out for this building and the police department that we sent in. I still I'm still not sure how big it would have to be. It may not be a huge jump. But when when they get too big, they are a problem. But I mean, it can be done.
I wouldn't be opposed to the to looking at it, but.
Well, money starts to be in the budget no matter what, right? You know, it's it's.
Yeah, this amount will it will be.
So we don't have to make a decision that I I think it would be.
Yeah, we we yeah, I I was hoping to have the numbers. I just didn't get it.
I I'm not opposed to looking into it.
Somewhere else too. So the animal shelter last one we had to shut down, they were putting space eater in and trying to get the the dogs and the cats and the puppies and the kittens were really the priority. That was the biggest issue. So.
So we'll we'll just wait, uh, make a decision. I believe we'll actually spend that on that till we get.
Right. Uh, we'll get the numbers put together and see what it'll take and we can bring it back to you if if that's something you want to look at. Absolutely.
Any other questions? And we'll close the public hearing at eight eighteen. Go to item number two, discuss discuss consider possible action on ordinance approving the annual budget for this year beginning October fourth. Any further discussion on the budget?
Everything I just said. But I'll read it again if you want.
And Mayor, just to make a note, um, I laid up, just to make a note, I laid up here. We need two motions for the budget. Yes.
Mayor, before you read that, um, what I failed to do before is I'd like to make sure that we give thanks to um, not not only I I certainly did not create this document. This has been a long labor of love. What's that? I'm sorry. I felt like I have to do this. You can do it too. Uh, Amber, um, Brittany, Marcy, Joe, um, and all the department heads, you know, when when we ask them to cut a little back, they get we tried to look at everything they asked for. We had to make some tough decisions, but y'all asked us to try to cut back a little bit so that we could uh save the taxpayers a little bit. This is a six cent uh decrease in the tax rate, although you know, overall the revenue is a little higher because of appraised values, but um, we were able to get the the homestead exemption increased and lower the tax rate and and just stay above water. So these guys worked very hard. It's been going, we've been working on this since uh Jim. And so um, I'm glad we're finally to this point and I appreciate all the hard work these that these guys did.
Move to approve uh an ordinance to adopt the city's budget for this year. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Motion by Dakota, seconded by Shelley to approve an ordinance to adopt the city's budget for this year. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor? unanimous.
Move to ratify the budget that require raising more revenue with property taxes than that the previous fiscal year.
I will motion by Johnny, we ratify a budget that will require raising more revenue for property taxes than the previous fiscal year. Okay, any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so I move on to item number three. We're opening a public hearing at eight point one. Five minute reset.
You have five minutes.
Okay, we're reset for five minutes. Eight point three, I'll call the meeting back order. Okay, item number three. At eight twenty-three, we're opening a public hearing on the proposal to adopt the annual tax rate for tax year twenty twenty-three. Pete hot.
Uh, let's see the rate. Do you mean, do I need to read off the rate?
Yes, please.
So the 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 proposed tax rate would be uh point six five one two two nine, uh which is a decrease of point zero six zero two six four or eight point four seven percent. This uh rate would however, would increase taxes in the amount of two hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-four dollars or six point five nine percent.
Anybody have any questions? So at six twenty-five, we'll close the public hearing. Okay, I look forward to discuss consider possible action under ordinance to not do the city's tax with twenty twenty-three property tax rate. Okay. Or any further Mr. Peacock, is there any questions in the discussion? Okay, I'll entertain the motion.
May the property tax rate be increased by the proportion of the tax rate of point six five one two two nine dollar valuation, which is effectively a six point five nine percent increase in the tax rate.
Okay, I have a motion by Shelley, seconded by Dakota to approve the property tax rate being increased by the adoption of the tax rate of point six five one two two nine for one hundred dollar valuation, which is effectively a six point five nine percent increase in the tax rate. This must be a record vote, uh, and it has to be approved by sixty percent of the members of the city council. Is there any discussion on this motion? Okay, very well. Johnny?
I approve.
Angela? Dakota? Shelley? I approve. unanimous. At this time, I want to thank all of the staff on the top, all the way down for the hard work you've put in on this budget. A lot of times we've gone into this, a lot of questions, a lot of digging. Um, the benefit package you could be in for our employees is awesome. Um, you you've done an excellent job helping to care for our people and and we appreciate it very much. Uh, happy staff, good city, we're in good shape. Anybody else say anything?
Are you hiring? No, good job. And it's it's the support staff all the way down. City is is looking great.
I hear a lot of this kind of the city and I think that shows the leadership.
Everything looks great. Thank you for the pen. I already told you how great that that it's kind of works. Overall, I think it's really going well.
Uh, and just just so you know, uh, I had a mayor call me the other day and ask me if I had anybody that he could trade for. I told him no. So not even Terry? Not even Terry. Okay, moving on to item number five, public hearing, our request to amend sub subsection C public hearing notices of section three, point one, point four.
Just say it's stated in the notice.
It's stated on the agenda.
Let me, let me just, you know, extremely brief. There are a lot of changes in state law with subdivision ordinances, a few minor ones to zoning ordinances. The the changes that were made to zoning ordinances involve amortization, the amortization process and non-conforming uses. We don't do these things as a matter of law. So we I the whole time I've been, we've never had any of these situations come up. If they came up, we just need to, we needed to, we have to amend our zoning ordinance to comply with the new statutes. But I don't, as a matter of fact, anticipate we'll ever do this or ever utilize these procedures.
I have any questions? Okay, at eight twenty-nine, we'll close the public hearing. Item number six, discuss consider possible action on amending the public hearing notices as out to comply with Senate Bill ninety-two-nine. I approve the next motion as stated in the agenda packet. Does that work?
Which you to approve. Yes.
Yeah, I approve. I approve the next one.
Yes.
Okay, having motion by Dakota, seconded by Shelley to approve uh, ordinance amendments as stated in the agenda packet. Okay, any discussion? I always asked about sort of once. I'm I'm trying to make up for that.
Look at these things. I know he worked.
Here we go, discussion. All those in favor? unanimous. Okay, item number nine, discuss the center of possible action on limit to the radio communication system agreements. Chief.
Oh, uh, on David, he did have to respond to an emergency. All right. This this is for the radio communications agreement. Uh, it's just for a service contract for the portable radios. It is per radio. They currently got twenty-nine radios. Uh, increases for one thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars and twelve cents. Uh, the annual cost for twenty twenty-four will be uh nine thousand, seven hundred and five seventy-two.
Any questions? I'll take the motion.
I'm moving to approve amendment of radio communications systems agreement.
I have a motion by Johnny, seconded by Angela to approve the amendment uh to the radio communication systems agreement. Any questions? All those in favor? Item number ten, skin that consider and possible action on an interoperable cooperation agreement with Johnson County the House Class C misdemeanor prisoners for the Johnson Fire Department for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four.
What? What?
This is a housekeeping item for the TCO uh number for for arson. For the fire marshal. Uh, we currently have one with them. It's uh, you know, getting harassed and arsonists puts him in jail and this would apply.
So he didn't have to have a police officer arrest him so that they can be ousted.
I I am a lot in case I'll if I can make one for red.
Okay.
Um, this is from what I understand, this could buy seam this and should probably wouldn't be very. I don't, I'm not.
You're 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 fine. Okay. All right, I'll entertain a motion. We have a motion by Angela, seconded by Mike, uh, to approve the interoperable cooperation agreement with Johnson County the House Class C misdemeanor prisoners for the Johnson Fire Department for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-four. All those in favor? Item number eleven, discuss the center of possible action on the renewal of the Johnson County E S D contract for fire emergency services.
I'd say it's gonna be Mike.
This uh, dream is pretty much like all those in the past. Uh, it does have a new through um, to our overall uh, funding received. I think it went up uh about eighteen thousand dollars, I believe. And then they are still in progress on some new incentives. One of one of the incentives that they're changing is uh, their cap on assistance for funding fire apparatus is going up to four hundred thousand dollars. Um, and so uh, the chief is working with them now to see if we could uh, retro that since we haven't received um, this rescue truck that we just put on order to either fund more of that or possibly fund more of the brush truck.
We've not written checks for anyone.
That, I'm sorry.
We've not written checks for anyone.
No. We've uh, we have the funding for that, but uh, and the rescue truck is due really any day. It's in Grand Prairie now, just having final touches put on it. Um, and the brush truck, we're still waiting on chassis. So we're not, who knows when we'll get that, but there's some other things that they're working on in here too. They're approving their budget tonight too, but so there might be some amendments coming as they make those changes.
Any discussions? I'll entertain a motion. I have a motion by Shelley, seconded by Dakota to approve the contract with Johnson County E S D for fire emergency services. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, item number twelve, discuss the center of hostile action on a proposal Rhyter LLC for the use of their compliance engine system.
Gage, you want to talk about what this is?
One thing I know about. Um, the Rhyter Compliance Engine is a no-cost service that the Fire Marshal Office can use. Um, fire suppression system and fire detection alarm systems are required to be inspected and serviced annually um, by the fire code. Um, kitchen hood suppression systems are more frequent and this compliance engine requires that those inspection companies submit their inspection reports to this engine. Um, there is a not a saw B, it's a maximum of a seventeen dollar fee per inspection report. Um, that that inspection company would pay the compliance. They, we won't have any cost to the to the company that has the suppression system or alarm system. Um, if they have any costs, it would be a a pass through through the inspection thing. Um, so what this is going to do is this is going to allow us to identify if there is an alarm system that we don't know about or suppression system that we don't know about, and also when they have deficiencies. Um, so if they tag or if they inspect the uh system that is defective or needs services, then they send that directly to my email. Any questions?
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Move, approve, approve proposal of our LLC music here completely.
I got a motion by Johnny, seconded by Angela to approve the use of the Rhyer LLC, the proposal to Rhyer LLC for use of their compliance engine system. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, staff reports. If I have any question on any of the staff reports. Okay, so at eight thirty-seven, we're going to adjourn to executive section. Uh, and we apply cap five eleven, so that be or that's a government code, um, to have the steps of our party. At eight forty-eight, I'm calling the meeting back order. Are there any, uh, there's no action from the the executive section? Are there any future items anybody you want to discuss?
There's one thing that I don't know how we deal about it. Over the course of the last six months, I have in my whole other side of town have been worn out with these listeners. They want to fix my roof. They want to fix my car. They want to fix solar panels. And it's every time I say, where's your permit? And they say, we didn't know we had to have one. Curious to know if we have any kind of notification in our system. Or they know they have to have a permit.
I can tell you, it's on our website that they, it's on our website, the requirements, but they don't like.
No, no, I didn't know if they had any any kind of signage or something out there that. That will be Peter Ben.
We've notified our residents that they need permits. And. With all due respect, most of those people, they do know they need them. And they and they show up and, you know, there's, I know we've sent officers to track them down. They've issued, I think, some citations for that in the past for people for they've told them to leave or get the permit and they don't. We do issue the permits. I I I know some of the companies go through and get them. They go through the process, but. A lot of them don't.
We get, I mean, look everybody out there in my subdivision, that this works out.
We can probably get a sign that we can put up in some of these subdivision, in the entrances of the subdivisions that. You know, maybe a something that, you know, says permit or solicitation permits required or whatever, but. I don't know how effective it would be, but I mean, we could get some made and try it. Put put them out after we have these hailstorms and.
Take the cost and and the availability of that and report next month if the council.
Sure.
Thank you. We have an update on that giant fire truck we ordered two years ago.
Uh, we've been getting pictures of it. It's in, it was getting painted a couple of weeks ago. Did you see the pictures? Well, it was getting painted a couple of weeks ago. There's. The last I was told, the chief is still expecting October, November. They haven't changed it since then, so.
And our website looks much better. I don't know.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. That in the case at eight thirty one, the speed of the turn.